Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 1st Stanley County Board of Commissioners meeting. We're officially in the fall now, I think, even though it doesn't feel like it. If you will join Vice Chairman McIntyre, he leads us in the invocation and then stand with us for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Father, we thank you once again for this beautiful weather. We thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Dear Father, we continue to pray for all those folks in the United States who have suffered under the recent hurricanes. Let them know that you're with them and know that you have a healing hand for them. Also, those in foreign countries who have had tsunamis and typhoons and they're also suffering, please be with them too. We cannot forget our military and those that protect us, that serve us in many different ways, and without them, times will be very hard. Now, we ask that you be with us as we go through the business of Stanley County and that we make those decisions that would be in the best interest of our citizens and pleasing to you. These things we ask in Christ's name of his sake. Amen. Please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Commissioners, you've got a copy of the agenda. Is there any amendments or have approval?
Move to approve as presented. Can you give them a mic on?
Got a motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre, second from Commissioner Swain. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Item one, retirement award presentation. Commissioners, if you will, join myself and Commissioner Lauter down front and we've got a presentation for you.
She is the daughter of John and Black Swinich. She is married to Mr. Barry Eaton and has one daughter, Janet Eaton. Janette has worked in the Stanley County Department of Social Services for 30 years. She started as an income maintenance case worker in the adult Medicaid unit in 1989. She has worked her way up to supervisor of the adult Medicaid unit in 1994. In 2003, Janette was promoted to former administrator of Economic Services. She has also served in leadership role as the interim director of the agency during times of leadership transitions. Janette retired from the Department of Social Services on August 31st, 2018. In addition to her role as certain administrator of Economic Services, Janette has served on multiple committees to address the needs of children and families in Stanley County, which has served to strengthen the community by her service. Janette's demeanor is kind, and although she is soft spoken, she is very passionate about her service. It is anticipated that even though she is retired, Janette will continue to serve and in life have volunteered to provide community service through her church and other organizations.
Can I say a few words? I confess to this latest work ethic. He has always gone above and beyond public media. I served publicly for work after public, five or six years ago on the U-Board. And the last time we had to have an interim director, it took a lot of my personal endeavor to get her to take my position. And she finally said yes, and I think she just got tired of hearing the wine in the car. She definitely said yes, but she deserves the reprieve. Congratulations.
Besides Janette being very passionate, and except for here, she's fine, I'd call her sweet. She really is.
You get the award, yes.
For faithful and dedicated service of citizens, thank and justification of your time, we appreciate your service and wish you a great day. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So, the basic, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Enjoy.
And Janette can stay up there for a moment?
Yep. Hey, hold on one moment. We've got one more thing.
We have a surprise.
Surprise?
So, the order of the Long Live Time is awarded to individuals who have provided 30 years of service to their local community or to the state. And so, we at the Department of Social Services are very excited and very proud to be able to give this order from the Governor, Roy Cooper, the Order of the Long Live Time. This particular award has been, I, Governor Roy Cooper, do present the Order of the Long Live Time in the rank of Ambassador extraordinary to us to enjoy all rights granted to member of this God-ordered order, which is a special privilege, and propose the toast which is here to the land of the Long Live Time, the summer land where the sun does shine, where the weak go strong and the strong go great, here to down home, the old North State. So, congratulations on all your years of service. We love you.
We have a surprise.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dolly. Item two, proclamation declaring October 23rd through 31st, 2018 as Red Ribbon Week. Presenter, John Henderson, Unit Commander for the Mecklenburg County Young Marines and Young Marine Sergeant Harrison. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'll turn it over to you.
Oh, hold on, let me get my paper.
Do y'all have a copy of the proclamation? Copy.
Do you want me to read my thing?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. So, Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week is about a man named Erinky Camarena. In 1972, Camarena joined the United States Marine Corps, where he served for two years. He then joined the Drug Enforcement Administration at their Calixco, California office. In 1977, Camarena moved to their Fresno office, and in 1981, he was assigned to the agency's Guadalupe Jalisco office in Mexico. Camarena had also worked as a firefighter and police investigator before joining the DEA in Calixco. Camarena's work became famous all of the United States and Latin America before he died. He infiltrated drug trafficking bands and successfully helped break up many of them. He managed to keep his face off the newspapers and other media despite the fact his name was well-known. One of the drug trafficking groups he was trying to break up was able to identify him as an undercover agent. On February 7th, 1985, he was kidnapped in broad daylight on a street in Guadalupe and was tortured and bludgeoned to death soon after. Although his body was found on March 5th, he may have been killed about one month before that. Pathologists who examined his body believe the actual date of death was more likely around February 9th. The United States government pursued a lengthy investigation of Camarena's murder. Due to the difficulty of extraditing Mexican citizens, the DEA went as far as to have two suspects, Humberto Alvarez Mahin, the physician who allegedly prolonged Camarena's life so the torture could continue, and Javier Vasquez Valesco kidnapped and taken to the United States. Despite vigorous protests from the Mexican government, Alvarez was tried in United States District Court in Los Angeles. The trial resulted in acquittal. Vasquez was arrested for his alleged involvement in the murder and sentenced to three life sentences. Agent Camarena received numerous awards while with the DEA, and after his death, he posthumously received the Administrator's Award of Honor, the highest award given by the organization. The Nationwide Red Ribbon Campaign teaches youth to avoid drug use was started in his memory.
Would you like to read the proclamation as well?
I don't have one of those. Yes, sir. I think, I think that y'all usually read it to us if you have the copy.
Stanley County Board of Commissioners declares October 23rd through 31st, 2018 as Red Ribbon Week. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them. And whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Mecklenburg County Young Marines and the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. And whereas the Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarera, a Drug Enforcement Administration Special Agent who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. And whereas October 23rd through 31st has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for the drug-free environment. Now, therefore, the Stanley County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st, 2018 as Red Ribbon Week in Stanley County, North Carolina, and urge all citizens to join me in this special service.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Eifert.
Make a motion we adopt a proclamation declaring October 23rd through 31st, 2018 as Red Ribbon Week.
Got a motion from Commissioner Eifert, second from Commissioner Lauter. All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I have some ribbons to give out to you.
Item three, Indy Volunteer Fire Department Presentation. Welcome, folks. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Cliff Robinson. This young man with me is Mr. Daniel Poplin. He is chief of the Indy Fire Department. I'm chairman of the board, I'm president of the Board of Directors out there. I've got a little bit of a story to tell you here before we start. Three years ago, almost three years ago, I was asked to sit on the Board of Directors of the Indy Fire Department. And I said, "You can take everything that I know about a fire department and put it on the head of a pin." And they said, "Don't worry, we'll teach you." And boy, have I gotten an education. There's way more to it than the average consumer out here has any clue about, and I'm very proud to be a part of this organization. A year into my being on the board, I had to make a trip for our December, I missed our December meeting, and I had, I was in Tennessee, and I came back, and about a week later, somebody looked at me and said, "Congratulations." And I said, "For what?" I said, "They haven't told you that you're president of the Fire Department yet." And I said, "No, no, that's not true." And they said, "Oh, yes, it is." And so, you know, I got even deeper involved in this department, and we've made some changes and some significant moves, and we have some things we need to talk to you about tonight. Shortly after I became president, Daniel and I sat down and saw our other officers and talked about what we need to do to get our fire rating moved from a nine S to a seven. And of course, we looked it up, and we found out that there's lots and lots of training and things like that. And so, we started that endeavor just to say, "Well, one day, maybe we can get there." And then this past February, the state came in and audited our department. And our audit was just impeccable. Matter of fact, the guy that, the man that says you can go from a nine to a seven, he's the one that did our audit, and he looked at our stuff and he said, "With these kind of records, you know, you keep keeping these kind of records, and you have a little more training and some better equipment, I can see you going easily to a seven, Protection Class seven, and possibly a five in one big jump." And I think a five is a little bit of a stretch for us, but seven is very realistic. And we're two years, we're two years into the training session. It takes about three years for this to take place. And we were really proud of that. And then shortly after that, we got a letter from the state saying, "Oh, by the way, you have equipment issues. Your fire trucks are getting old, your equipment's getting old, and we prefer that you have new equipment or nothing over 25 years of age." I do have a handout, if you don't mind. But we sat down, and Daniel and I sat down, and Brian Collins, our Assistant Chief, sat down and said, "We've got to figure out how to make this department better." And we did. And we realized that, you know, I realized that being a businessman, you know, we've got to have better equipment, and this stuff is not inexpensive. I was absolutely stunned at the cost of fire equipment. And we knew that we weren't going to buy new equipment on what we, our current fire tax rate, or fire tax cost. We're currently at six cents per hundred. We're the second lowest fire tax in the county, with Oakboro being the lowest, but then again, we don't have a July the fourth weekend that generates them, you know, six figures in income. And everybody else in the county is at 10, and someone, one of them is, which one is at 12?
South Side, I believe.
South Side, I think, is at 12. And said, "Well, you know, I hate taxes anyway, and I said, 'I hate to raise taxes on people.'" But we sat around and talked about it, and so I went down to Shelton's Insurance, and those people down there were very, very kind to me, and they ran me, and this is right here on the front page of the thing that I gave you, a cost of the difference of brick and frame houses in Protection Class nine and Protection Class seven. You can see typically it's about $40 to $50 per house, per value, less in insurance, starting at the low end, a $150,000 house, up to a $300,000 house, where it's like $80 to $90 difference in cost. If we raise the fire tax from six to 10 cents, that's $40 on the $100,000. So, if you've got a $300,000 house, your fire tax goes up $120, but your homeowner's insurance goes down about $100, both brick and frame. And we said, "Well, we might can do this," and it become a wash, almost a wash. It's not totally a wash, but almost a wash. And then we sat down, sat down and said, "Well, now, what are we going to do first?" And if you'll look on the second page, it looks like this. We sat down and put together a plan. If you'll look under 2018 up there, straight down that list tells you how old our equipment is and how much we owe on our building. That's a little high, the number on the building, it's actually about $2,000 less than that. I looked the other day. And we did that for the next so many years. And what we would like to do is ask you guys to approve an increase from six cents per hundred to 10 cents per hundred on the fire tax, which will generate approximately $83,000 plus more income for us every year. And what we'd like to do is in March of 2019, be able to order a new tanker pumper truck, which is our biggest need right now. What we have now is actually a put-together, put-together tanker truck, and it's created lots of problems for us, and it's slow, really slow. We had one, one call where we sent out one of the engines in the tanker at the same time, and the tanker got there three and a half minutes after the engine got there to the fire. That's not a good thing. Our tanker will haul 3,000 gallons of water to California at 65 miles an hour, it just takes 25 minutes to get to 65 miles an hour. So, we've had problems with it. We've also had massive equipment cost. In 2017, we spent $30,000 on vehicle maintenance. In 2018, as of June the 30th, and I haven't looked at the end of the last quarter, we'd already spent $30,000 in vehicle maintenance. This past week, we discovered a leak in our fiberglass tank on engine number two, and I was, "That's just a leak, no problem to fix that." Well, a new tank is going to run us somewhere between $15,000 and $20,000 for that one item. Now, that fire truck company is out of business, as well as the people that manufactured the tank. But even though we had a lifetime warranty on the tank, we're kind of stuck where we are. We're not sure what direction we're going to go with on that. And even a patch for that leak is $5,000, if we can find one. So, we're having just, you know, huge costs because the equipment is growing old. It's not because our equipment is worn out, it's because our equipment doesn't get used enough. And if you look at fire departments, they sit there, and they sit there, and they sit there, and, you know, they need to be replaced. And the first thing we'd like to do is next year in March, be able to order a new pumper tanker. Cost of that's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $250,000, just to haul their water. We want to take this increase, if we get it from you guys, and put it in a separate account away from our operating expenses, and to be used for nothing but apparatus and building expenses. If we, if we get the increase of $83,000, we figure that we can pay for a pumper tanker in three years. We've already been approved by the Bank of, by Uwari Bank for a tax-free loan at a relatively low interest rate, and we'd like to pay that off in three years. The fourth year from now, we'd like to take that money, fourth and fifth year, and finish paying off our building. And then in five years, if you look over at 2024, we'd like to replace engine number two, which will be 26 years old at that point in time, with a new engine. That cost is going to run somewhere in the neighborhood of $40,000 to $450,000 for that one vehicle. But every five years, we'd like to start replacing a piece of equipment. Now, we intend to, and we're looking at replacing our squad, that's an ambulance-looking kind of thing that we transport medical supplies and things around in, and we really don't, we don't transport people. Very, very, very seldom do we ever transport people. We transport equipment. And our squad is 17 years old, and it's got 17,000 miles on it. That's why I'm telling you about the equipment that just sits. And with the increase that we got this past year, it's seven and a half percent, we feel like we can order a new squad almost immediately now, and pay it off, pay that off in five years, just based on the increase that you gave us. And then we've carried this all the way out to way beyond 2039, we're up to like 2084 on this thing, no, 2079, excuse me, where in every five years, we're replacing a major piece of equipment. Therefore, once we get this rolling, our equipment will never, ever be over 20 years old. And it's a plan, and it's a plan that we've run the numbers on and rerun the numbers and rerun the numbers, and it will work. It will work. Now, down there, we've also got that we may end up in 2029 buying, you know, having to have a ladder truck based on whether a large company up in Charlotte comes down to the Oakboro area. They may want us to have one, and we don't have problems asking them to help us. But we need this increase to purchase equipment and try to get the fire rating lowered from a nine to a, from a nine to a seven. And like I told somebody else, I mean, you know, somebody lived in a community, I said, "You can either, you know, give it to the Fire Department, or you can give it to the insurance company as far as premiums go." So, we're requesting that you guys vote to give us an increase from six cents a hundred to 10 cents a hundred, and we're going to follow this plan that I presented with you Have you got any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Commissioner?
I do, Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Current fire tax rate in Indy is what?
Six cents per hundred.
Six cents per hundred. Do you know how many property owners there may be in that tick?
I don't, I don't have a clue.
Do you?
Chairman, if you don't mind me stepping in, there's a, right around 3,400 to 3,450 population of the Indy community itself.
And by the way, we also, we had a community meeting about this last week. It was publicized from up in the newspapers, it was on Facebook, and on our sign out at the road, and the people that showed up, we had no objections whatsoever from any community member about this.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Thank you for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Item number four, approval of enhanced voluntary ag district application for Senator Lori Ivy. Good evening, Ms. Ivy.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and staff. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Volunteer Ag District Board. The Board met on Wednesday, September 12th, to discuss the following applications for recommendation for approval from you as a Board of Commissioners. The first application for enhanced voluntary ag district, and just a reminder, the enhanced VAD application is a 10-year commitment, is for Henry A. Stogner Jr. and Anna Marie Smith. I do have an updated application and signed agreement as of this afternoon. Ms. Farr is very thorough, and we realized we had, we didn't have a signature of one of the landowners for one of the three tracts of property. The second application is for enhanced voluntary ag district, and that is for Sydney and Margaret Fields, and includes three different tracts at 32305 Valley Drive in Albemarle. And the Stogner property is 8167 Whitley Road. And I would ask for your approval of these applications.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Swain.
I move to approve the applications for enhanced voluntary ag districts as presented by Ms. Ivy for... by Ms. Ivy for Sid and Margaret Fields and Henry A. Stogner Jr.
Got a motion from Commissioner Swain, a second from Commissioner Morgan. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you.
I'm assuming you'll have the other one. Will that be next month or?
Yes, we, the third application that you originally received, there are several owners of the 363 acres, 363 acres. So we're going to have to get signatures from at least one other property owner, potentially two other property owners. So, once we have that, I've been in conversation with the landowner today and we'll be working to get those signatures, but they certainly want to go forward with the application. We just want to make sure that we have everything covered from our end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five, planning and zoning, presenter Michael Sandy, planning director. Good evening, Michael.
Thank you, Chairman Brost. Board of Commissioners, staff, got a couple cases before you tonight and powerpoint here. First case is ZA 18-08, Peter Harworth, request of rezoning of 1.7 acre tract owned by, currently owned by Joseph Hatley and located at 24807 Business Highway 52 South here in Albemarle from Neighborhood Business NB to M1 Light Industrial, tax record 24353. The lots surrounding this property are zone neighborhood business, residential agricultural, R20, and general highway business. Some nearby lots are within the city limits of Albemarle. Other areas within a half mile are zone M2 heavy industrial. Currently, the property has a large metal building which is privately housed by Chair Core Business. Nearby properties are either used for business or residential purposes. The M2 district will allow for manufacturing and assembly process, which can be operated in a relatively clean and quiet manner, which will not be obnoxious to adjacent residential and business districts. Mr. Harworth is the CEO of the company which produces insulated product normally used in large buildings. Most of manufacturing takes place at the other plant in Nevada. This will probably be a facility for distribution to the southeast and house accounting and administrative offices. However, a small amount of manufacturing is possible. Mr. Harworth shared with the planning board at the last meeting that this process has no obnoxious fumes, noises, et cetera. No more than one or two large trucks could be expected for weekly delivery. Parcel with a large metal building is a little bit over 12,000 square feet and a large gravel parking lot. This property is located within the growth area in accordance to the 2010 Stanley County Land Use Plan. Traffic on Business 52 averages about 2,800 cars per day per 2016 NC DOT traffic counts. The traffic along Business 52 is around 5,000 cars lower since the opening of the new 52. Planning staff recommends this approval with this request due to the location of being in the growth area. Planning board reviewed this request at September 10th meeting and recommended approval by the project by unanimous vote. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Commissioners, is there any questions for Mr. Sandy?
Mr. Chairman, I have just one.
Sure.
Michael, would the business fit under the neighborhood business now if it wasn't for the manufacturing?
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Eifert, any other questions? All right, thank you, Michael. We've got to hold a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this rezoning request? Anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board? Commissioner Lahon?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Commissioner Lahon, second from Vice Chairman McIntyre. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying, oh, excuse me. Commissioner Lahon, will you amend your motion to include the language that is on our agenda?
Okay, I will be happy to.
Yeah, if you will, please.
The A 18-08, these are, I apologize for the pronunciation.
Just the, just the bottom part, this, this rezoning will allow.
Okay, yeah. The zoning will allow for economic growth in areas identified in the land use plan where there are growth areas.
All right, all right. Got a, got a, got amended motion from Commissioner Lahon, second from Vice Chairman McIntyre. All those in favor, if you will, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Sorry about that, Commissioner Lahon, I'm getting staff over here on me. Second item, item B, rezoning request for Stony Gap Properties.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. ZA 18-09, Stony Gap Properties, request of rezoning of 5.24 acre tract located at the corner of Stony Gap Road, Bailey Road, and NC 242773, which is Troy Road here in Albemarle from RA Residential Agricultural to GB General Business, tax record 16599. Property is currently zoned RA. Lots surrounding this property are mostly zoned residential agricultural. There are other GB zonings in the area. And let's see, including parcel rezoned GB just last December, 2017, which is what you see located further south on, on your map in front of you. The GB generally located on the fringe of highway, highways leading out of the urban commercial areas that dispense retail goods and services to the community, provide space for wholesaling and warehousing activities. This parcel is currently wooded and pine and hardwood trees. It has access to 242773, Stony Gap Road, and a small section of Bailey Road. The property is located in a growth area per the 2010 land use plan. Traffic in this area averages 12,000 cars per day according to NC DOT, and Stony Gap carries about 730 cars per day. Stony Gap Properties is owned by Mr. Joel Malden II and Dr. Laura Malden. In speaking with the planning board, Mr. Malden showed photos for convenience store and restaurant, seaweed outpost located in South Carolina, which is an example of what they like to do. Mr. Malden hopes to construct something similar to this on this property. The proposed location on NC 2427 is a sensitive gateway area and appearance will be important both to the business and for the community. Planning board recommends, planning staff recommends this approval of this request since located in the growth area and the planning board met in the September meeting and were unanimously recommended this request. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sandy from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Schleen.
I just have one. Do you happen to have copies of those, the proposals that he gave?
Sure do. And I'll turn this over to, once you have your public hearing, he'll present those pictures to you.
It's all right, Commissioner Schleen, I'll go ahead. I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. And... Good evening.
Hey, good evening. I'm Joel Malden. Wanted to, whatever question you may have, go ahead and shoot.
Is there any questions, Mr. Malden?
How are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Good.
What's your projected timeline if this is approved?
Well, it's all going to, it's going to depend on budgeting. We haven't started pricing everything out yet, of course, until we make sure we can move forward with it. But I would hope within the next year, you know, probably before the, I was asked a question last week whether or not it'd be before the highway got started. I don't know that. But we've already negotiated the riderways with DOT, so that's already done, so know what we're working with. So that would be our projected timeline, anyway.
Good-looking building there on the pictures. Any, any other comments, questions from the board?
All right.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Eifert.
I'm making a motion, we approve the rezoning from RA to GB. This rezoning will allow for economic growth in the area identified in the land use plan as a growth area.
Got a motion, got a motion from Commissioner Eifert, second, I think, from Commissioner Morgan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Mr. Sandy, ZA 18-10 rezoning request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. ZA 18-10, Stony Gap Properties, request of rezoning of 34.12 acre tract of the northeast corner of Dunlap Road and Troy Road, tax record 16596. They want to request to be rezoned to general business. This lot's surrounded property mostly zoned residential. Other GBs are located in the area. As you can see on your map, the highlighted blue area is the property in question. Parcel's mostly wooded with pine and hardwood trees, couple acres of the property been cleared, approximately 850 feet of road furniture and 500 feet on Dunlap Road, approximately 10 and a half acres of the property along 2427, it's in the growth area per the plan, simply because our plan doesn't follow property lines, it follows roads and other features. Traffic along this section of Troy Road is about 12,000 cars per day and Dunlap Road last measured was 120 cars per day. Stony Gap Properties owned by Joel Malden and Laura Malden, request plans to develop the frontage acres into a boat and camper storage facility. Entry would be located on Dunlap Road and area would be buffered from 2427 by existing vegetation. A brick and metal fence entrance would be constructed and the developed areas would be fenced. The addition of many storage warehouses to cover stores may come in the future from the highway. These are what's proposed by the property owner. Planning staff recommended this request, it is major road furniture and portion of the property being located in the 2010 land use plan. The planning board at their meeting on September 10th recommended, recommended their request even after hearing from one of the property owners, they voted unanimously. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Sandy? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board? Commissioner Lahon?
I'm making a motion to approve the rezoning, the rezoning will allow that on growth in areas identified in the land use plan where there are growth areas.
Got a motion from Commissioner Lahon. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Morgan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Mr. Sandy, FPO 18-01 Updates and Revisions to the Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully, this will be it for tonight. FPO 18-1 is Flood Plane Ordinance Amendment. We were just recently notified that we needed to update our 2008 version of the Flood Plane Ordinance, and luckily, there were not many changes need to be made. I believe in your packets, you have copies of the strike through underline, the mandatory changes in the model ordinance, and there's a few other items, suggested changes that we made, and we chose a few of those to be included. The proposed maps that you have, that we have access to, none of the flood maps changed. All those were, were done by highly technical radar, radar study back in 2008, so we had the top-of-the-line information at that time, and those, those maps did not change. And that was from 2008. I'd be glad to go through each of these pages if you are interested in going through more detail. Just give me some direction or ask questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Any, any questions for Mr. Sandy on this?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Sandy, I've read this because I'm working on one for the City of Locust now, so I'm well-versed in all these pages, so, thank you, sir.
All right, we've got to have a public hearing on this as well. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board? Commissioner Morgan?
I'm moving to approve the planning and zoning ordinance as presented by the board.
Got a motion from Commissioner Morgan, second from Vice Chairman McIntyre. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. We're down to Consent Agenda, item six. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Swain.
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented this evening.
Got, got a motion from Commissioner Swain, second from Vice Chairman McIntyre. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Public comment. I didn't have anyone sign up. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing none, I'll call on Commissioners. Mr. Morgan. Commissioner Lahon. Vice Chairman McIntyre.
No comment.
Commissioner Lauder. Commissioner Eifert. Commissioner Swain. Y'all must've took a bet to see how quick we could get out of here this evening or something. Andy, did you win or lose?
I won.
Good. Good job. No comment from me, so looking for a motion to adjourn?
No.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.